Council meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Struble.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this wonderful evening to perform city business. Please be with us and our staff as we continue to keep our community a great place to live, work, perform a business, and raise a family. We are, we, as we work through issues and address both sides of the issues, help everyone understand we are all working for the overall good of our entire community. Again, we ask for your protective hand for our first responders and our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them home safe each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call?
Mayor Searcy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
You have a form, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
I know, short and sweet, right?
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Searcy?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I have the proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is November 30th. Whereas the city of Apache Junction, Arizona celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas, 94% of all consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go small, independently own retailers or restaurants, and they have not, they have not been to before and would not have otherwise tried. And whereas, 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said this day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas, 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, the city of Apache Junction, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jeff Searcy, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout this year. And I hope both papers pick that up and get that in there because our small businesses need this recognition. And I believe we have a bunch of chamber folk here tonight, and they're going to accept this, so I will come down.
I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, very much for this honor. We accept the proclamation on behalf of all of the small businesses in Apache Junction. There is a great portion of our membership that are small business members, and we greatly appreciate them, and we support them as much as we can. We do have a Shop Local program in the summertime, and that is specifically to support our small businesses here. So thank you very much. We really appreciate this honor.
Okay, announcement of current events. Let's start on this side.
Couple things. I'm sure Mayor Searcy will talk about it, and probably Gail, but a couple weekends ago, we had the Make a Difference Day, and it was just great to be out there with a whole bunch of people and see all the young people that came out and, and helped us out and did, and helped to beautify the city. The, probably the last thing. One of the best things that I've had in the last two weeks was I got to go and volunteer at Head Start. They had an open house probably a week ago, and they invited local people to come in, go in and, and just spend some time with the young kids there, the four and five-year-olds. And it's just such a great time to go there and, and see their enthusiasm and their inquisitiveness and, and their energy that they have. It's really, it was really quite amazing. It was a good thing I only had an hour because I would have been wore out and had to go take a nap, but just appreciate all the people out there that came to the Head Start and volunteered their time.
I did want to talk more about our Make a Difference Day. This was put on with conjunction of the city by the Apache Junction Community Development Corporation, which is a separate nonprofit that was sort of kept alive whenever the economy turned down through the friends of Apache Junction. And throughout the last two years, we've been working on what are our goals, what kind of projects are we working on with a limited fund or no funding at all. So when, as a board, we decided to go ahead and participate in this Make a Difference Day, not knowing the first time you do an event, how successful it's going to be. Is anybody going to show up, or who's going to show up? And we were so thrilled to find we had given out 118 t-shirts. So we had 118 volunteers on the first time of holding this event, which we are just so thrilled of the community turnout. And Team Rubicon, who's not from Apache Junction, they had eight volunteers themselves. So we had business people out there, we had retired employees showed up, we had current employees and their children and their spouses. It was just a fabulous event. This year, we took on the median project. We painted on the wall, started a mural painting on the wall over at Flatiron for the first section, and we did get three individual homes finally sign up. So this is an ongoing event that the CDC wants to continue putting on. We had some absolute great team effort within the board itself, getting the t-shirts through Jim Duncan. He rounded up sponsors, and it all paid for itself, which is fabulous. The goal is to keep projects like this ongoing in the private sector as well. And since we had been advertising about Make a Difference Day, we've had another group come forward, a local church group called Just Serve. They have to put in so many hours each week in community service and are looking for elderly, handicapped people, anybody that needs help in maintenance of their homes. So we have, the website is up. You can also call Fox Young at the city because like always, the partnership without the city, it wouldn't have been as great as it was today on Saturday, but it was just a fabulous turnout. And I'd like to thank everyone that showed up and put effort to it. It was just a great day. And it was a busy day between that and Halloween at the park. It was just an amazing event, so thank you all.
Okay. Two things I want. Well, first off, I'm going to touch on the Halloween event. Went out there, and it was very well attended. Even had my grandson out there who claimed that he got the most amount of candy he's ever gotten, ever, at one time. So he was, he thought it was a huge success. Second thing is, I just want to remind everyone tomorrow, November 6th, at 5:00 to 8:00, we will be having an informational open house on the upcoming waste program. It's going to be over at the Multi-Generation Center, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I suddenly thought of that. I didn't write that down. We're going to have two presentations, one at 6:00 and one at 7:00, and then we're going to have stations around where you can go up individually and talk to people concerning maybe some of your questions, and you do that on a one-to-one and get the answers direct from them at that time. I'd say please plan to attend, and I hope we will all see you there.
I just wanted to thank Parks and Rec for such a great Halloween event. There was, I don't think even any standing room left at the park. It was amazing, great event. A lot of work went into it. Then the trick, the trick-or-treating that they did, I forget what it's called, out of the trunk of your car, trunk-or-treat?
Trunk-or-treat.
Huge success. Kids were just coming out of that with bags and bags of candy. It was amazing. Don't forget, the Festival of the Superstitions is this, this weekend, Saturday I believe it was, and then our parade for the veterans. We have a veterans tribute at the Festival of the Superstitions. It's always a great event to attend. And then, of course, the parade on the 11th.
Well, I did have a few things, but they've already been covered. But this came in today, this annual turkey drive put on by Empowerment Systems. I guess last year, over 100 turkeys were donated to families throughout our community. And if you do donate, you can, it's tax deductible. The credit limit is 400 per individual and 800 per couples. If you're interested, just contact Empowerment Systems. You can find them through their website, or there's a phone number down here at the bottom, and you can just contact them.
Several of us, I think four, went to the Town Hall, Pinellas County Town Hall, which was on volunteerism, something that's near and dear to all of our hearts because without our volunteers, this city would be at a standstill. I believe it was excellently done, great presentations, the young people were marvelous. As we sat at tables, most of the tables had at least one young person there. And they were so interesting. It was, the difference in the generations was so interesting to hear as people talked around these tables. I also went to the Pinellas County Business Education Workforce Development Summit with our city manager, and their goal in that was progress meters. They meter eight different points, and they are jobs, education, young talent, health and well-being, natural resources, infrastructure, civil participation, and connected communities. And they, the, the goal was to show the interconnectivity between all of those things. One impacts the next one, which impacts the next one, et cetera, et cetera. And interestingly enough, I went to a, a economic development meeting today, and as a spokesperson from the Federal Highway Administration said almost the same thing, just almost mirrored what we heard. The Sun Corridor and Maricopa Association of Governments have received a grant to analyze the value of transportation and how it impacts the economy, which in turn is going to impact jobs, which in turn is going to impact business, which in turn, and it just keeps going and going and going. So both of those were, were quite interconnected, if you will. I thought that was kind of neat. And again, don't forget the Festival of Superstitions. If you have a dog, dress him up in a flag, bring him to the patriotic dog costume party, and we'll see how many flags and caps and so forth that we have. Also, the Wellness Fair, Health and Wellness Fair will be on the 16th of this month at the Multi-Generational Center, and that's always lots of fun. There's lots of booths. People bring out all kinds of products for health and wellness. It's a real interesting time. Come on down. There's also a nice walk before that starts at 8:00 in the morning. They take a nice little hike and come back in and then start the fair. So everyone is invited to that also. Thank you.
So they did all talk about mine too, but I'm going to talk about them again. So first off, we're joined by Boy Scout Troop 380 from Mesa. Thank you for coming to our meeting. It's way more interesting than Mesa's meeting, so. And also, yeah, Festival of the Superstitions, there is going to be the patriotic pup costume contest. Don't worry, my dog is not going to be in it because I'm going to be a judge, so it's wide open. Anybody can win that. There's a, a lot of things going on then for the veterans, and then Veterans Day again, and that's always very moving. It, we go back and forth. We have two VFWs, 93, 99, and 79, 68, and the Legion, and they, and it rotates between them of who puts it on, and they all do an awesome job about that. And last week, Councilmember Rizzi, Vice Mayor Wilson, and I went to the groundbreaking for Sky Bridge, which you've heard, and we watched the video a few months ago. It's finally getting started. And by the time it's all finished, there's going to be like three different buildings there, there's actually going to be 17,000 jobs in that area. And this is why the school vote today, which is already over, we don't know how it's going to go, those jobs, there's, people are going to be looking for good schools, so it was really important that, if that bond passes. So I'm going to now go on to the Make a Difference Day. And the part of this about the median, if you've been following what I've been doing since I've been up here, this has been a passion of mine since day one. And it was two different sections. There was the east section, which we are extending out from the section we'd already done, and then down on the west section, which we got the local merchants to help kick in to pay for, which I'm going to mention here in a little bit. And I guess the, on the west side, since it was all freshly turned dirt, it was way easier to plant down there than down on the east side because they had to break that raw ground down there.
No.
I was digging on the west side.
Okay. But, you know, like you go to a lot of groundbreakings or, you know, Habitat for Humanity, a lot of people act like they're working. These folks were actually working. They were digging the holes, putting the trees in, and actually doing the work. So it really was awesome to have over 100 people out there. And you saw that one picture. I don't see why in future, we can't have 500 people out there. I mean, we got 40,000 people. Let's, let's double that next year. Let's do that whole median. And like Gail said, they also was the event at the, at Flatiron, and then there were some cleanups also, and there's a lot of, so hopefully this gets covered and next year it, it snowballs. But we do want to thank the two groups. I really wasn't familiar with them, the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, I guess they helped procure the plants. Team Rubicon, who I'd never heard of before, but I guess they're a disaster relief group, and they, they brought out all the tools that were used. And then some of the donors were Modern Woodmen of America, that was the, I think, the biggest donor. Planet Fitness jumped in from the start with $1,000, and they had a lot of their employees out there also. And then Allstate, Austin Development Company Construction, Arizona Winner Visitors Association, Bank of, of America, Clear Title Agency of Arizona, Cunningham Heating and Cooling, Dirtwater Springs, Dutton Law Firm, Granite Express, Handlebar Pub and Grill, they were in the picture, that's right in front of their business. Of course, they wanted to help. Hard Knocks, Rocks, and Excavating, they were early. The Hitchen Post had employees out there. Iron Horse Seating, ex-Major Insalaco, I even kicked in some money for the shirts, I think. Superstition Mountain Rotary Club, who helped do the project on Royal Palm, they kicked in again. They're always a big help. And VFW and Walmart, they always have money donated. And one big thing that's going to happen next, and is now we're going to put down the Crush Granite and Treasure Chest Granite Pit, which is right up here against the gold fields, they're going to be a big help on that and giving us a tremendous deal, which is saving the city tens of thousands of dollars if we had to buy that at, at full price. And then not to mention all of the kids and churches out there that just came out and helped. So it was really inspiring, and like I said, once this stuff takes root, it's going to look really cool, and you're going to see a difference when you come from, from the west to the east and you hit Meridian, you're going to say, whoa, I just entered someplace different. This is Apache Junction. I never realized how beautiful it is out here. We already know, but now you're going to see, you're going to come from that unincorporated area, you're going to see that from both sides, and it's something to really be proud of, so. City Manager report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to add one little thing, how so, how much we love working with our veterans organizations as we get ready for the Veterans Day Parade in honor of those who have served, and in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. We pulled that next one up there, Matt, or Al's doing that. We were distinguished this last month in the Arizona City and Towns and County Magazine as a statewide highlight to Apache Junction Flatiron Community Park. And we're starting to see some of the benefits as we see the crowds come for Halloween, it's getting bigger and bigger. And as I said, there are two, three years from now worried about parking, and so we're going to continue to be concerned. We actually had the businesses really work closely with us on being able to use the, the street this time, and that was a, a big step. To clarify and just make sure everyone knows that tomorrow night's location of the open house, as Vice Mayor said, is at the Multi-Gen in the big room. So if you're coming, and we want everyone to come, learn about it, is, is in the, in the big room. We were also recognized, or the Apache Trail was recognized this last month as number eight of 30 scenic roads in the entire United States of America. And it's a beautiful road, so many of us know it so well, but it really is neat to be recognized in bicycling, bicycling, bicycling bikes and gear news. And that was a really neat thing to see. And then before I close, I just wanted to say kudos to Public Works again for the great work they've done over the last month in getting our street and roads cleaned up. It takes us a while, our crew is limited. We did receive a letter that said, "So proud to live in Apache Junction. In less than 25, 24 hours, my questions were handled, and someone was, went to the extra step to clean up my area. Now, this weekend, when the crew comes out to freshen up my landscaping, I'll be so happy. Only in AJ would this happen, not Mesa, not Chandler, nor Phoenix. Your Public Works Department impressed me beyond anything I would have imagined." So wanted to give them their kudos. It's, it's often the case, easy to point out the things that aren't happening, and it's good to be reminded of the things that do. And that concludes my report, Your Honor.
Okay, public hearing, consideration of application for a special event liquor license for the Paws for Life Car Show to be held at the Elks Lodge. And Jennifer?
Your Honor, the application was submitted by Cynthia Pearson for the Paws for Life Car Show, held Saturday, January 18th, next year. Our four departments were solicited for comments. That was Planning and Zoning, Building and Safety, Police Department, and Superstition Fire and Medical District. The only comments received was the Police Department does recommend that the neighbors are notified of the event, and any live band remain inside to reduce any noise complaints. Planning and Zoning recommends, again, that the applicant keep the event signs out of the right-of-ways and that they be removed immediately following the event. The applicants are here this evening, if you have any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Hi, I'm Cindy Pearson with the Apache Junction Elks Lodge. This is an annual event that we provide the space and the opportunity for Tuney House to have her Paws for Life Car Show, and she can answer any questions about her charity. And this is Tuney House.
Most of you do know me already. You've been to training. Your pony graduated. And we put AJ on the map this year by having Shadow's picture in Saratoga Racing Magazine out of New York. Nice little picture of you, Shadow, and two of our dogs. So they know about us across there now. The car show benefits for our veterans program, we work with veterans. We also put the money towards, it's a fundraiser, we're a nonprofit, 501(c), nobody gets a paycheck, so all volunteer 100%, but we also have a Youth at Risk and Honors program, and we don't tell anybody who's who. But we put training in for them to become trainers. 10 have graduated and got certification to be a Level 1 trainer, meaning basic, and Class 1, which is intermediate. Some are going on to become vets. They got a scholarship. One decided to become an MD, changed, wanted to do humans. That's okay. But all monies go towards the training, our veterans program. We are now training the inmates at Pinellas County Sheriff Detention Center to train service dogs for veterans. We take our dogs down there, and we train with the inmates. We're in our second year now, and it has been successful. Right now, we have a veteran's dog in Hope's Sporting Camp, where the monies that we raise are helping to put that dog in a kennel that we keep all year for cancer patients, but also veterans that have to go. And we have a young man that was hit by a car, hit and run, and he'd had brain trauma from Iraq. And Déjà Vu is down there, and I'm working every day with her for an hour and a half, and until the young man is stable enough to have his parents come and transport him back to Florida, Déjà Vu. The money that we make on the fundraisers is helping that veteran's dog not be put in a shelter but being cared for and still continually trained. We've done this event now, three years, four years?
Four, I think.
Four years out there. It's been a lot of fun. I just approached Peggy to see if maybe Shadow would like to come in his service dog vest because it's, you know, after a while, all cars, you like to see something a little different, and Shadow does represent Paws. And we do do this car show every year, and they've been very kind to allow us to have it there because when we started growing more cars, we didn't have the space to put them where we had it before. So I just gave you a little spiel about Paws for Life, but doing it now since 2008 at the Greyhound Park, and I have been training since I was 16.
How important is this? What percentage of your budget does this raise, so?
We have an 8,500-year budget.
So is this a, a big part of it?
Yes, it is. We have to have three major fundraisers to just have the money to provide for our upkeep, our veterans' training program. Our trainers have to go to classes. The classes are very expensive, they're $500 apiece. And now that we're getting dogs that are more assertive, instead of, I don't like to say aggressive, because they're trainable, we have to take special classes for that. We're trying to get an AED because we've had a few emergencies with the dogs that people say, well, I don't know, they, I didn't know they get that. Everything that comes in, none of us get any of the money. I put about $1,000 a year out of my own money into this. So do my trainers. It's just, there's kids that don't have food at home of our youth at risk, there's just different things. things. But all the money goes back into the training and the veterans' program, the scholarship doesn't go anywhere else.
And is there any way to take donations in the off times also?
We have it, donations can be taken from our website. We now have it to where we, you people can donate money into our website. But most people, when they donate, they mail directly to the office. And it goes right into the three divisions.
Any more questions?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion among council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a special event liquor license for the Paws for Life Car Show, being held at the Elks Lodge, number twenty-three forty-nine on Saturday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, excuse me, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of application for a special event license for applicant Cynthia Pearson for the Beers and Brats Rodeo Dance, which is in February, which I believe is Lost Dutchman Days, right?
Mm-hmm.
So would the applicant inform us on this one?
This is our annual Lost Dutchman Day Beer and Brat Fest that we do on Thursday. It's the kickoff for Lost Dutchman Days. And it's a continuation, special event liquor license, because it's two days consecutive. And we'll be doing the rodeo dance also. It's a great way to, the five dollars that people pay to get into the rodeo dance, all goes back into the community. It's such a wonderful thing to be part of. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? It doesn't look like it. We've all seen this one before.
Yep, thank you.
Any more discussion among council? This is a public hearing also. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a special event liquor license for the Beer and Brats Rodeo Dance to be held at the Elks Lodge, number twenty-three forty-nine, on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, and Friday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of application for a special event license for the ride for the Salt River Wild Horses Event to be held at Superstition Harley on January twenty-fifth. Jennifer, Chip?
Yes, I'm going to declare a conflict for myself at this time, so I'll step out and not be present for this vote.
Joel, does he need to actually step out, or can he just sit here and not participate?
I'd advise that he steps out. You can do all conflicts that way.
All right.
I can't roll my eyes, then?
No.
Well, you can, but...
Jennifer, will you kick this off once he goes through that door?
Certainly. So upon receipt of the application, our department did solicit comments from our three city departments and Superstition Fire and Medical. The Planning Department and the Zoning Department had the same comments about signs in the right-of-way. However, this one, since it is on private property, that they don't block traffic flow and that they be removed at the conclusion of the event. The applicant did call today and said that they would not be able to make tonight's hearing.
Okay, so the applicant is not here. Is there any discussion among the council? Would be interesting to know why Chip couldn't vote on this. But this is a public hearing also. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a special event liquor license for the ride for the Salt River Wild Horses Event be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Second?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Interview and consideration of appointment to Todd Kans to the Construction Board of Appeals. Jennifer?
Your Honor, at the last council meeting, you appointed several members to different boards and commissions. And the Construction Board of Appeals is short, some candidates, and has been short for several years. Councilmember Schroeder mentioned that he did have someone that could possibly fill the position. They are here this evening. The board does not require the applicants be a resident of the city, however it is desired. This position fills a contractor position, and I believe it is a non-general contractor.
So ordinarily, we would interview on a Monday and vote on a Tuesday or the following week. But in this situation, we're going to interview and vote in the same day?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So any discussion among the council? Is he here and do we want to interview him?
Yes.
Yes.
He's here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Todd Kans, and I'm applying for the Construction Board of Appeals.
Thank you for stepping up.
You bet.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
I am a local contractor in the HVAC industry, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. I've been involved in construction for thirty-two years. I started working when I was twelve years old. I grew up in a small community. My stepfather ran a construction company. And I would beg him every summer to let me come work for him. So after many phone calls and a lot of letters to the state, I could finally get hired on with the construction crew. When I was eighteen, I was his job foreman. And I've been in the construction industry ever since.
I thought we outlawed that kind of labor in the eighteen hundreds, but I guess it's still around. So...
It's slowly getting to South Dakota.
So Todd, you were joined in, you were in service, were you not?
Yes, yes, six years National Guard.
Well, Veterans Day is right around the corner. I hope you take the day off. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I have another question. If down the road, if other openings happen on a board, would that be something you'd be willing to entertain?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, I've been living in the Apache Junction area since I moved here from South Dakota in nineteen ninety-nine. So it's a city I'm familiar with. And I am interested in the future of the city.
So whereabouts in South Dakota?
Right around Sioux Falls, South Dakota, just north of there.
You're the other side.
Yeah, you're on the other, you're on the good side of the state.
Yeah, the good side, yeah.
Any more questions?
Well, you got my vote.
All right, I think that's it. I think we can now vote.
Excellent, thank you.
Any more discussion? Then I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I move that Todd Kans be appointed to the Construction Board of Appeals, filling the vacancy of contractor other than general contractor for a term to expire October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
My point of clarification, the term is a two-year term for this board, so it'll be two thousand and twenty-one. My apologies.
Okay, so I'll second amendment to two thousand and twenty-one.
And I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yep.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Ratification of Jennifer Peña for appointment to the position of City Clerk. Bryant?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. This is one that we haven't done for over thirty-nine years. Tonight, as required by the Apache Junction City Code, is a part of the process for any department director, the city manager goes through the recruitment process, and we select, and then we must ratify. And this, tonight, is the, I'm seeking the ratification for, or of Jennifer Peña to be appointed City Clerk of the City of Apache Junction. And I'm thrilled to be able to present her to you. Let me just share a couple informational items, and we'll turn it over to Jennifer for a minute. But she has over eighteen years of experience in municipal government and in Arizona, has served twelve years as an intergovernmental liaison, an assistant to the mayor in the city of Litchfield Park, did serve some time with the city of Peoria, and was a senior administrative assistant with the city of Chandler for five years, and has been with us for the last...
Ten months.
Almost, yeah, almost a year. I present to her as a strong candidate and could be a great city clerk. And Jennifer, if you could share a few more words for our community to get to know you a little bit more and our council?
Sure. I started with the city of Peoria, and that's where I started off in the clerk's office. My twelve years at Litchfield Park was as deputy as well. Small cities, you wear many hats. I am very honored and humbled to be here this evening as your new city clerk, if appointed. My predecessor, Kathy Connolly, served almost forty years here at the city. Her knowledge and expertise in the clerk's world was very well-known, and she also was sought after for her information on just municipal government in general. I'm just looking very forward to moving forward, working for the city, working for the community, and partnering with our other departments to improve processes and streamline things that make processes here at the city much more efficient for our residents.
And you have a closer drive now?
Compared to Litchfield Park, yes. I did that for about eight years. That was long enough.
Any more questions or discussion?
No, I just had a comment, Your Honor. And I don't mean this in a bad way, but only ten months. Honestly, it seems like you've been here much longer because you've been such a natural fit. You've been a great fit for our city and welcome. It's just been really great.
Thank you. It feels like home.
Yeah, and it just seems like that. So thank you. We're so grateful to have you.
Thank you.
And we all appreciate the attention to detail that you do and keeping us out of trouble.
Hopefully.
So I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to ratify the appointment of Jennifer Peña to the position of City Clerk and welcome.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
You betcha.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Of course.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Presentation, discussion, and direction to staff regarding possible code amendments related to park model additions in RV subdivisions in newly set manufactured homes. Larry?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services. We have two, what I think are brief items tonight. We were here a couple weeks ago to talk about this particular item. We had adopted new building codes a few months ago, and the industry related to park models and RV parks, we had, and discussed this last time, so we're dispensing with the presentation, but we had showed you that other cities do regulate the size of park model additions, as they're called, Arizona rooms. They've, some cities are four hundred square feet, some are seven hundred. We have no limit. We did put a limit at four hundred. And so there was some discussion in the industry. And so they came back to us and said, what do you think about forty-eight percent of the lot area? So we would have under roof air-conditioned space, you could have forty-eight percent of the lot. You'd still have to meet the setbacks. And we'll bring back specific language for you to consider if you give us direction to staff. You would still be able to have a carport that wouldn't count towards the forty-eight percent. You could still have a shed and things like that. We also are recommending, however, when you see the language, that because some of these additions are up to and have been over a thousand square feet, that they, instead of having three-foot setbacks, we would ask you to consider five-foot setbacks. So that's one of the three items that we were going to bring back. Another one is, as we were writing this, we did put a limit on the age of a manufactured home you could bring into the community. So we set that at two years old in the RS-ten, RS-seven-M, RS-ten-M, RS-fifty-four-M, but we forgot to do it in RS-twenty-M, we forgot to do it for RSGR. So the main acre and a quarter lot, so that would be the only zoning district where we didn't say how new a manufactured home could be before you could bring in the community. And finally, we have run into circumstances for park models where we have some parks bringing in very old, early edition park models. So we want, and we haven't figured out what the date is, but we want to come back with a recommended date on how old a park model should be as it comes into the community. So those are the three items that we've talked about. We've also heard that there are folks that didn't like our definition of a RV park model, because it does essentially say you can't live in it for more than six months. So what you all adopted, what we presented, was that that is what the industry standard is. We are learning that these park models are being sold and getting mortgages on them, as if it were a manufactured home. So we do, we aren't suggesting that you change what really is the industry definition of a park model. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So there has been some discussion about that, where in four of these parks, the lots are, it is a subdivision, so the owner owns the unit and the lot. And now we're finding that the assessors in both counties, Maricopa and Pinell, are affixing park models. So we have some inquiries into the State Department of Housing about that. But in case you hear, when we do have the public hearing and we bring the ordinance forward, we're not recommending changing the ordinance that you all adopted a few months back on what the definition of RV park model is. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Dave's here to answer any questions. We do have a proposed motion to give us direction to staff tonight.
Does this include she sheds also?
He sheds and she sheds. But as long as they're under a hundred and twenty square feet, I guess, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I just need a little clarification. When you say forty-eight percent, that's the addition? Can be forty-eight percent of the lot size?
The park model and the addition.
Okay.
And typically, these were coming out on some of these corner lots. The corner lots are typically bigger. We have some lots that, Dave and I did an analysis, we have some lots that are almost as big as, say, one of these lots in, say, Dan Kaufman subdivision, probably a little smaller, like a three thousand square foot lot. So on a three thousand square foot lot, folks want to have a bigger Arizona room. But we are recommending that we do restrict that, so it, you know, is appropriate size in the lot, rather than have some sort of upper limit on what a park model addition or an Arizona room can be. So we're really counting the conditioned space, which is a four hundred square foot park model. And then we had suggested, which you adopted, was a four hundred square foot limit on the Arizona room. Again, industry is saying, you know, what would be wrong with forty-eight percent? And a couple of the parks, at least one park, I think Road Haven already limits it to forty-eight percent. So that's where the forty-eight percent came from. But we're talking about the conditioned space. So that's the park model and the addition.
I was looking at the pictures that you had in your presentation.
We presented that last time.
Yeah, the ones that are almost touching
Yes.
the additions, it's kind of frightening when you think about possible fire.
We do have a public safety concern. Yeah, we do have a public safety concern. So already, it's a three-foot. Rudy's going to talk about the parks that had the self-policing agreements as the next item. But we also had a slideshow, but we were going to spare you that tonight as well. Any questions?
Are there any more questions? Are we ready for direction to staff?
Okay. I move that direction to staff be given regarding miscellaneous amendments to the city code related to park model additions in RV subdivisions, age of newly set manufactured homes in RSGR zoning districts, and age of newly placed park models in RV and mobile home parks, as per our discussion tonight.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Direction to staff on whether to terminate the nineteen ninety-two agreements between the city and the remaining self-policing RV resorts. Larry and Rudy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Rudy Askevias, the planning manager. Mr. Mayor, a few weeks ago, we came to you with a short presentation on the so-called self-policing agreements. And actually, I think there's only maybe four, four ma- four, maybe five parks that still operate under, under the self-policing agreements. And the idea was that in some of these parks, managers and/or owners would control the installation of park models and awning simple structures, and, and they were supposed to meet, enforce city setbacks. They were supposed to enforce city building codes. It was problematic from day one, call it lack of expertise or, or, or lack of will to, you know, argue with people about how much they could build on their lots. A lot of issues came up, so right off the bat, eight out of those, eight, I'm sorry, three out of the eight parks that had signed self-policing agreements decided not to do them, and like I said, here we are almost thirty years later, twenty-seven years later, we have four, maybe five parks left. So we came to you with a presentation. We sensed that it was, you were agreeable to rescinding the remaining agreements. It seems to be going in that direction anyway, insurance purposes, safety purposes, everything else. So we seek tonight your direction to go ahead and contact the, the remaining owners who have these agreements, and let them know that we're thinking of rescinding the remaining agreements and just require permits like we would for any other residential property, mobile home park, RV park in the city, and we also have a recommended motion in our brief staff report, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I think we did go over this quite a lot.
Yep.
So I will ask for another motion for direction to staff.
Your Honor, I move that direction to staff be given regarding the termination of the nineteen ninety-two agreement with self-policing RV parks.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the upcoming council dates?
Your Honor, I move then an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Monday, November fourth.
Uh-uh.
No. Seventeenth, seventeenth? And an executive session at six PM and work session at seven PM for Tuesday, November sixteenth?
Now, what are those days?
No.
No.
Eighteenth, eighteenth.
Eighteenth to nineteenth.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
There it is.
Eighteenth and, why is this wrong?
Eighteenth to nineteenth.
Twenty-nineteen in the city council conference room and city council chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and replace this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. I have two. The first one is gonna be Terry Reynolds.
Hi, I'm Terry Reynolds. Eleven twenty-one South Lothar Drive, here in Apache Junction, and I have one, I was here at the work session last night, and I have one further suggestion on one of the recommendations for the city manager. It's under nine-five-dash-five vehicle and collection equipment maintenance. On page four, top line, if you were to modify that and say shall comply with all applicable federal and state regulations, you can delete the additional par, the sentence there, because drivers are required under federal laws and are, and are monitored under federal DOT regulations. So by adding the federal to that, you can delete that other sentence. So I just wanted to make that recommendation to the council, and I would not, was not able to do that last night. I appreciated all the due diligence from the council last night. It was very robust in the discussion. My teeth are broken, so that's why I don't have them, so it's kinda hard to talk. But I enjoyed last night. It's unfortunate there weren't more people here to listen to the discussion. I'd like to invite the public. Last night's discussion was about the new ordinances that are gonna go into place for the trash. You can go to the website and get that information for anybody that's interested in it. I guess I'm out. I don't know.
I think he was out.
Thank you.
It just went wacky, so...
Thank you.
George Schroeder.
I have voice again. Don't worry about my voice. Two-four-four-four, West Virginia, George Schroeder. First, I've been in consultation with treehouse communities and informed them that they, their storage lot at Virginia and Delaware needs to go. I'm gonna get a court order to have it removed, and the offset, offset, backset, whatever you wanna call it, shall be implemented by federal and state laws. We're gonna have a four-way stop at that corner. I'm not asking you. I'm telling you. Second, the annexation land that is proposed was never discussed, offered to the public, never talked about. All they did was go Brookfield Development or whatever it is, went and said, hey, we wanna do this. City manager said, okay, and those developers said, okay. Guess who didn't say okay? People of Apache Junction. It's not benefiting us in any way, not in one way. It has forced Zionism, and I'm not having it. So a, a motion to the courts to stop that will be forthcoming. I got, different subject, I got the file back from private FBI investigator on the death of Richard Nordlow. It could've been avoided. Now, I asked and received a special waiver to go to the US District Attorney to press charges against people that were responsible for that situation. There are eight city employees, and I asked you to terminate their employment. Did you do it? No. Did you laugh at me? Yes. My turn. Have a good night.
Wouldn't anyone care to respond? Okay, we have no election results yet. We hope to possibly have some, so with that...
The website still says zero.
Yeah, so with that, we'll be adjourned for two weeks and maybe see everybody tomorrow.